Let's call this Board of Supervisors special call meeting to order. April, you do roll call, please.
Chairman Akers.
Present.
Vice Chairman Gill.
Present virtually.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Johnson.
Here.
Supervisor McGruder.
Present.
Supervisor Smith.
Here.
You have a forum, thank you gentlemen.
Special call joint works session of the Essex County School Board and Essex County Board of Supervisors will now come to order. The clerk of the board will now do the roll call.
Mr. Crofton?
Here.
Mr. Stenfield?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Bundy? Mr. Huntley?
Here.
Opening remarks? Yes, if everybody would just stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the name of our republic, which is standing as one nation, one nation, one government, indivisible, indivisible, just, and just, for all.
Thank you all. All right, so opening remarks, we called this, requested this meeting, given the financial information that we were given at our last Board of Supervisors meeting. I've had an opportunity to sit down with the chairman of the school board and Dr. Jones to discuss some strategies going forward on how we mediate some of this potential negative impact in our budget. And so that's what's caused this meeting to come to order. We will have a budget update from Ms. Tascieneri that will go over the slides, some of the slides that we looked at at our Board of Supervisors meeting. And then with that, we will really just turn it over to the school board and superintendent to let us know what kind of options you've come up with to help bring us forward. So with that, Chairman Crofton, if you have any additional comments.
Yes, thank you, and thank you all for just giving us of your time to be here and to solve these complex issues that we have caused. So our whole board is here, Ms. Bundy is on her way, she'll be here momentarily. You know, bottom line is, this happened on our watch, so ultimately, we are responsible. You know, we failed in our fiscal oversight role as a collective, and you know, we cannot ever let that happen again. I am proud to say, though, that I think most of the fixes are in, you guys are fully aware of them, the public may not be, but since we, you know, a majority of our board in January of this year began to see what some of us had been seeing for quite some time, the financial irregularities, the absence of standard accounting practices, the absence of standard business practices, all of the above. As soon as we started to see that and could convince the majority of our board, I did, I do think we took swift action. We underestimated the magnitude of the problem, which thought it was just incompetence and just, you know, sloppy accounting. It's turned out to be something much bigger, which is why we're here tonight. But as far as the things we did to take action that I think we can all be proud of looking forward and give us hope looking forward that this can never happen again, we've replaced our entire leadership team. All of the ones that made these mistakes that we failed to catch in our oversight role are gone. We have an entirely new leadership team, and we have a lot to be excited for at Essex County Public Schools. We immediately asked for help, which you guys graciously gave us, in the form of centralizing our services, accounting, finance, and everything related to accounting and human resources initially, with a vision to maybe expand that beyond with functions that aren't unique to Essex County Public Schools and education and instruction. And I think that's important because neither of us are big enough, a small rural county and a small public school system, to have any economies of scale, so we need to combine efforts just for, just because, but especially because we can't afford to operate on different sets of books any longer, which is what we lived with before. And we can't afford to have just different teams duplicating efforts, you know, because neither of us have economies of scale. So I look forward to that. I'm proud to say that, you know, this board all unanimously voted to proceed in that direction and asked for that help. You guys came in, you triaged the situation, you had to pick up the pieces of the current school year and operating that budget while simultaneously rapidly developing the current year's budget, which was next year at that time back in the spring. So we did all that, and it's been a lot of work and working so feverishly and in trying to deal with the situation that we had to, that you guys inherited and that we found ourselves in, you know, we made some more mistakes on top of that. But I think the root cause of all of it has been addressed, so thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, Ms. Bundy is with us now, so we'll show for the record her attendance, thank you, and welcome. With that, I'll turn it over to Bobby Tascieneri to give us an update.
Thank you. Chuck, are you going to bring up the presentation? At the September Board of Supervisors meeting, I provided the board members specific information as to the status of the FY 24-25.
Can't hear you, Bobby. Get a little closer to you.
Is that better? No.
Chuck, can you turn up our mics a little? We're still learning the new technology, too, so.
Is this any better?
Say it again?
Yeah. Now we can hear you.
Top look at that.
At the September Board of Supervisors meeting, I provided the board members some information on the school budget for the 24-25 year, which is what we are just going to be closing as of September 30th. And what you have in front of you is the information that I provided at that time. I do want you to know, though, that we have dedicated staff since that time period to review basically every line of revenue and expenditures to make sure that we have an accurate balance for you. It is improving some, I'm not ready to be able to give any information on that, the staff is still working diligently, but I'm hoping that it won't be as challenging as the 1.4 million that we are looking at. And there again, you know, I think that a lot of this is just systemic inform, activities that have occurred there, you know, as you are all aware, we had COVID, ARPA money, you know, millions and millions of dollars flowing to every locality in educational school district. And on top of that, we also had the federal title and the sped funds. And of course, the ARPA and COVID was easier to spend and use than the others. So that's why I feel like our grant area, the Fund O2, the deficit that is showing, I don't believe that we're going to be repeating that. I do want to send kudos out to Ms. Gross and my staff, they have been working diligently to correct, to seek reimbursement, to make sure that the process changes are working and in place. So I do not know where we will land financially in Grant Fund O2, but next year I can guarantee you that it will be nothing like this. As for child nutrition, I did reach out to Mr. Taylor, because he has generally always run a very tight ship. He usually comes in very close to his budget, usually under. This year, his comment was that it was the food cost that had just run through the roof. And since we didn't address that in this current year budget, that's going to be something that we probably will have to look at and identify some resources for that. Chuck, next one. So moving on to the current budget, which is 25-26, that started July 1st, what we are seeing is things that we could not have anticipated. We are receiving weekly notifications of taxes not being paid, penalties being assessed, we're receiving invoices on just about every and anything that you can think of when it comes to, and most of it is related to payroll, you know, some type of payroll benefits, whether it's, you know, IRS taxes or VRS or Unemployment Commission or whatever. So as we are being made aware of that and gaining access to these agencies and seeking their help, we are trying to work on that. But my concern is, is that we received about a $252,000 bill from the IRS for the last quarter of '24, if I'm correct in the year, yes. So it was, and the reason that we received a high bill like that was because we had not sent in the November, December payroll taxes like we should have. And so, of course, we don't budget for, you know, penalties or interest like that, and the school cannot bear the cost of that. We are anticipating more of that coming from January through June of '25 for the schools. We will address that and make that known and, you know, try to mitigate that cost as much as possible. But it's the penalties and the interest and the unknowns that continue to just create problems. We also are finding out that a lot of stuff has not been reconciled when it comes to deductions for fringe benefits, whether it's the Anthem, the health coverage, or VRS or whatever. So we're diligently working on that, trying to kind of stem the flow of funds running out the door. Chuck, next one. So I have communicated to the both boards that my concerns are we may be facing upwards to about a million dollars in penalties this year in late payments, penalties, whatever you want to call it. None of that was incorporated into the 25-26 budget for the simple fact that we just weren't aware of them. And when I kind of tongue in cheek make this statement that every week there is something that just, you know, hits us, I am not kidding, it's quite impactful. Also, part of the issue with this year's budget is that there was a overcommitment on the school's part in personnel, and I believe that Dr. Jones is working through a lot of different options to address that. And as you are aware, you know, the personnel cost is probably at least 85% of the school's budget. So that definitely has a, you know, a very dramatic impact, because it's not just somebody's salary, it's also all of the fringe benefits that are attached to that. And the school's fringe benefits range anywhere per person from 32% to 47%, depending upon the type of benefits that they select. So some of the suggestions, and I know that Dr. Jones and the school board as well as our board has taken into account is anything that has already been paid out of, because we do have a shared joint bank account. So it's not as if when you run into a deficit at the school that your checks are going to bounce. Your bank account is the same bank account as the county's. So the deficit for '24-25 is going to be treated as a due-to-do-from kind of on accounting standards, whereas basically, we've already paid it, and so then we'll, you know, need to find an option to be repaid, so that goes back into the Anna Sine General Fund. We could look at doing some type of repayment plan using some of the local revenue that the school does receive. In good years, that's usually up to around $200,000. And then, of course, the immediate step is to really tighten their belts even more. And I think that everybody's aware that the 25-26 budget is tight, it was created tight. We went off of as close to actual ADM numbers as possible, we also utilized actual payroll personnel cost. So there really is no fat in this budget, and so to even tighten it more is going to be a challenge, and we do realize that. That's complete, completes my presentation.
Chuck, can we go back to that first slide real quick, please? So just for the audience and anyone else watching to be aware of, so we look at the Operational Fund One, which is the actual revenue collected, you see that $16.8 million. That's, even though the expenditures are higher than what was budgeted for the school board, the revenues are a lot lower than that.
Right.
And that in part is due to the ADM being put in a number that was artificially higher than what we actually had in that year, which is why it's so important to really capture, even somewhat be conservative with what the ADM is, so you don't get hit with that, not getting that revenue back from the state. Of course, there's other things in there, there's some of the penalties and other fines and fees that are in there, but it's just, I want to point that out of how important that ADM number is with our funding, and that is what, partly what caused that big discrepancy. With the grant funds, I know we learned about this late last year, not knowing what the impact would be, you know, some of these grants we weren't able to, we had to basically turn back in, because we went past the threshold of time. And I say "we," I'm saying all of us together, because it's all county dollars, at the end of the day, it's all the citizens' money that we're paying. And then the child nutrition, as Bobby explained, so I just want to bring that to everyone's attention. I know that with the current budget and the current enrollment, our current budget is based off a little bit lower enrollment, I would not suggest making the recommendations to change that, I would stay on that conservative side, because what we found is the number typically hasn't gone up through the year, if anything, it's dropped down a little bit. And we did go a little bit higher than what the state projected it would be. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the schools, if there's any questions that you have, or just, Dr. Jones, if you're ready to present some solutions that you guys have come up with, I'm sure this board would love to hear it, and then we can kind of go back and forth a little bit.
Yes, sir, I have some documents to hand to you, I don't have the slides, so. And so, for those who won't be able to actually see it, I'll have to talk us through it, if that's all right?
You might want a slide, Scott, if you want a slide your mic, or if Dr. Jones, you want to use the wireless mic, so you're not having to hold it the whole time.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. And so what I was just saying is, while I don't have the slides to show visually, I will, you know, talk through it, since there are some folks who are listening and are able to see what we're talking about. And so what I have for you this evening is two options to really begin to resolve and remedy where we are. So certainly, there's no need for me to go back and rehash, you've heard and the public has heard exactly kind of what's got us here. So our charge is to really focus on, you know, what we can do to move forward, to one, ensure that we are not in the same predicament again, but as much as what we can possibly do at this point to really clean this up. So before I start, I just would like to reiterate a couple of things that you heard Ms. Bobby mention and that are really relevant to my remarks this evening. And one of them is that last year, you really took out all the fat from the budget, so the budget is lean, I think, really is no fat left in the budget is what I heard, so it was already pretty lean. And so I think that'll be relevant as we talk through, but then the other piece is, and this is the same for most school districts and likely many, many other businesses and companies, that the vast majority of, you know, your money goes towards, your budget goes towards payroll. And so basically, you're talking about people. And so as we talk about the best way to remedy this, and we've had some private conversations at the Joint Committee and all, we've had some pretty candid conversations, I want to be a little bit careful and sensitive as I talk about it this evening, because some of the things that I talk about, clearly, our staff has not heard. And so, and it wouldn't have been appropriate for me to talk to them about these things just yet anyway, but this is public, so I just want to be a little cautious at how I speak about it. So when you talk about the biggest dollars to really look at, you're talking about people. And so what I have put together is truly kind of what we believe in this first option is, if you will, a worst-case scenario. And worst case and best case at the same time, best case to really take a big chunk out of the debt, worst case, when you think about the impact of what that means. So to look at this list of personnel to be cut, and the first column says personnel to be cut or laid off, or compensation adjusted, there are positions that are listed down there, down there, starting with the IEP facilitator, I'll just rattle off the titles, the IEP clerk, the counselor role at JCIIS, the 12 of our professional, paraprofessionals, or 25 paraprofessionals. Again, those with benefits, and I know how this is sounding, but I want to start here, right? Laying off nine long-term substitutes, reducing the salary of one of our literacy curriculum specialists, laying off public relations specialists, laying off the safety and security coordinator, laying off the child and nutrition supervisor, reducing the salary of the workers in the kitchen, laying off the virtual lab coordinator, laying off the occupational therapist, and laying off the assistant superintendent. Those dollars, just as I mentioned that, those are big dollars. But at the same time, you certainly can, I'm sure, deduce exactly what we're talking about when we talk about the impact that that could make if we were, if we had to go that route. Worst-case scenario for us, understood that it could be best case when it comes to taking a big chunk out of what we owe, and that's a real thing, what we owe, I understand that. But to just share some of that, you know, if we were to move to remove the IEP facilitator, that's the one role here that we believe would be smartly absorbed by us, because we need an administrator at the high school, we need a second administrator there, and that's a position we could move that person into, and it'd be close to a wash, not quite, but that's the one of that list. The clerk, IEP clerk, if we were to proceed with the layoff, then we are looking at minimal support for our incoming new special education director, who will be here October 1. If we were to lay off the counselor role at the middle school, at the intermediate school, we're looking at having that position to be covered by, continue to be covered by, or right now, it's being covered by the student advocate role, but we would be out of compliance with what the National School Counselors Association and by Virginia Code, as far as not having a counselor role in a school, if we had to do that. I almost don't even have to mention what it would mean for us to lay off 12, either 12 paraprofessionals or 25 paraprofessionals. What we are looking at there is if we were to lay them off from that role, we would be looking at hoping that we could have them to come back on in the role of a substitute and continue that work. It would mean a salary change or a change in what it costs to fund them, because we're looking at benefits being removed if they are moved to the substitute role. And so with both of those, it's the same thing, the paraprofessionals, either 12 or 25, the long-term substitutes, they currently have benefits, which is a unique situation, at least in my experience, in many places, that's not necessarily a thing, and that hasn't always been here, but it is now, so we could be looking at reducing them to not having the benefits, but then, there's no guarantee that they would continue in the role as a substitution. And so these are some things that are worrisome, the public relations specialist, we are doing some big work there in that role, this position that I identified immediately upon my arrival as something that could be, it could be, it was an opportunity missed, it felt like to me, it feels like something that could really help us get more attractive, become more attractive, if we get our brand out there. So we would be taking a back step, I believe, if we were to lay that person off. The same with the safety and security role, that person is, right now, making some great strides in that area as it relates to securing and thinking about things that keep our schools safe that we don't always think about, that we don't always, that sometimes perhaps we take for granted, and while we had some people working in those areas before, almost every school district that I'm aware of has this role for a reason. And you certainly hear a lot of the news about all of the kinds of things that occur in our schools these days, and so having that role that does a lot of different jobs is important for us, but it is on the list. The same with the child nutrition supervisor, obviously, we believe that all these positions are super valuable, but you just heard a few moments ago about this position and how he oversees how that budget normally works, and we did have a bit of an anomaly this past year with the cost of food and all, but he does the leadership kind of work that's needed in that role, even in a small division, that kind of leadership is important. But it is on the list, because again, it's a high-dollar mark that could, if you, it could make an impact if we had to go that route. The work, the workers, child nutrition workers in our schools, there are a couple of them who, they recently received a bump in pay. That idea was smart at the time to be equitable across the board, to make the two of them the same as the third one, that made sense at the time, and obviously, being in a position to afford it, so we thought, that's one of those things that makes sense when we can afford it, obviously. So it's on the list for consideration in this heavy cut option, option A, we're calling it. And then the last couple here, the virtual lab coordinator is a position that supervises students in the classroom when there is a virtual teacher, so we do have that situation. And that's not uncommon these days, where the teacher is teaching from afar via the video, and so there's a person in the room who's helping to facilitate the instruction. They are working with small groups, they are, you know, helping keep them on task as far as where they are in the lesson, you know, if it's technology-related, they are heavily involved in that, and they're managing the class with regard to behavior. So that is a valuable role, and it's not one that just, you can stick a person in there, it's instruction involved in that, too, and so, but again, that's a position that's on this list, the occupational therapist is on the list, I'm a high-dollar mark, but that, the occupational therapist, obviously, is a person who works with students with those occupational needs with, you know, through their IEPs. And so that's one that when they have those goals on their IEP, we really can't not do that, we have to have an occupational therapist that provides those services. But it's on the list, and if we had to cut it, then we would be looking at a couple of different things, we would be looking at contracting that service out, which is, again, going to be a cost. Or if we get to the point of missing and not providing those services, then we're looking at compensatory services that we end up having to pay more in the end, so it's pay now, pay later in that sense. And then the superintendent, I'm sorry, the assistant superintendent position is a high-dollar position, as far as laying that position off, you'll see the comment that I put there, that because of the conversations that we have had, if we have to go this route, I feel very comfortable and confident in that statement that the job, it would be sacrificed, because that person is willing to do that for the sake of the division, the interest, the vested interest that that person has in the division. But while the job would be quote-unquote sacrificed, the work wouldn't. So this is a person who would allow us to contract their services to provide what we need for the school division, but there would be a cost savings, because obviously, we're not looking at the fringe benefits that go along with that salary. And so, heavy hitters here on the list, a couple of notes that you'll see down at the very bottom, someone had mentioned earlier, Ms. Bobby mentioned earlier about the miscellaneous revenue that sometimes runs around $200,000 or so, right now, the last count was $229.5, but that hasn't been counted, including this bottom-line number. The bottom-line number here with, you know, all those layoffs, we're looking at about $615,000, $622, if we're looking at the 12 paraprofessionals, but in the green, you'll notice that number is higher, $752,049, $752,049, that's if we're looking at laying off the 25 paraprofessionals. Again, I hope that people hearing me are not hearing me as if I'm being insensitive and thinking that's the route that we want to go. I just want to be clear that just laying out the options that we have right now and we had to take a look at. But that miscellaneous, that $229.5, and neither the ADM funds, they're not included in these numbers right now, the ADM is up a little bit, but again, that's, those are numbers that we're not looking to do anything with at this point, but to just keep them in mind for when they become relevant to us. The hiring freeze would remain in effect, the position's lost to attrition, these are the things that we are planning, as far as how we can help continue to offset this budget. But as we lose positions to attrition during the year, we will think twice, long and hard, about, you know, what those positions are and whether we really absolutely need to proceed with filling those positions then, or can we survive without them? Any end-of-the-year surpluses that may come about, we are prepared to surrender those entirely, I believe, we, our historical practice is to surrender half of it, we are prepared to do the entire 100% of that, anything that we have left over, again, to help offset some of this debt. And the idea of payment plan options moving forward, certainly something that we would welcome as a possible helpful part of this solution. And so, and then on the back of this sheet here, you see, you will see where we have gone through and. have gone through and found fat and trimmed it. And I'mma call it a fat, but in essence, it's really not. Um, the, what, what we did was, we talked to all the leaders of all of these areas of schools, as well as, um, n- not as much from the, from the, the school board office here, but, but we looked, and we've had numerous, uh, confidential conversations about, uh, what we would have to do if we had to shave and trim from their budgets. And so, you heard the phrase tightening up of the belt. That's one that, that I've had to use on a number of occasions, as, as, um, things that we, we may have to do and have to move a little bit differently in order, again, to be sure we are, we are taking a, a, a nice chunk out of this, this deficit that we have in order to, uh, maybe take advantage of the payment plan options that you, um, may offer to us moving forward. The subtotal of just the non-human capital areas that we have found that we could save in, um, is about two-hundred fifty-one-thousand-three-seventy-five on this option. Um, and again, um, if you were to add all of it together, it puts you about a million dollars, a million, a million dollars, a million and three-thousand-four-hundred-twenty-four dollars. Um, option, option one, it is not the option that we are jumping over, jumping for joy about, but I want it, uh, again, I had to present this one because clearly, this is where the biggest, biggest dollars are. Um, but there, but, but the impact is so great, um, with the option one.
May I add to that?
Absolutely. You'll see that very last line there, very last sentence. That's, that's a real sentence, if we had to go, and the very last one is that public relations would be very much a challenge as well as a purpose. I'm surprised we're going to add this one.
So, for the, uh, for the public, and especially our Essex County Public Schools staff that might be listening, that are, uh, probably, uh, getting quite scared at this moment, um, this, this scenario that we're painting is, is basically if, if we're forced to repay the, the majority, if not a- all of this debt, right now. And as it was said earlier, just to kind of restate, you know, these bills and penalties were incurred from, from last year, from, uh, from a previous administration's, uh, missteps and, and, and erect, you know, financial mismanagement, under our oversight. That's, that's on us, but, uh, we, um, once we recognized it, we took, took swift action, but what, we're still dealing with the, the penalties and unpaid bills from last year. The problem is they're coming due now. And so, if forced to, to repay, substantially repay this debt now, this is, this is the only way to do it. Um, and as it was stated earlier, it's been stated a few times, I just want to quantify it for you because I'm, I'm quite proud of it. This year, for the first time in my four years on the board, where we actually, the majority of our board was allowed to make input to our budget development, we did reduce between last year and this year, uh, our, our overall total revenue by four-and-a-half million dollars, which is nineteen percent reduction in a single year. And the way we did that is we, we did a conservative estimate of our ADM, which is our enrollment, K-through-twelve enrollment, not inclu- including pre-K. That's, that's, that's got its own separate line item. Uh, that was a hundred less, uh, students. That, that's a lot of, lot of revenue, but it's the right number because that, it resembles what we actually have. And if you overestimate, you get more money throughout the year, but then they take it from you at the end of the year. So, you, you don't really do yourselves any favors. In fact, that's what we, we saw on the slide, that we lost, uh, over a million dollars at the end of the year because we overstated our, our ADM last year. And then the third thing that we did is that we baselined all of our line items, our expenditure line items, on actual twelve-month expenditures at, with a twelve-month look back. So, as was, as been said a few times, we cut out all the fat going into this year, which unfortunately makes us less able to absorb this, uh, or pay this debt right now, at this year. It makes it more painful because, again, we already went through and cut out the fat as a, trying to be responsible, a good stewards of our taxpayer dollars that you guys graciously give us. And I think that was beneficial to the county's budget, uh, for this year and future years with respect to tax rates and, and being able to meet your other obligations. You know, we, we came in a little lower than previous years, so... But all that said, we're, we're still facing this debt. We got to repay it, and, and he's going to get ready to give you a, another option.
And so, you know, our options?
Yes.
Okay. And so, um, a- a- as you all received tho- those, those, uh, copies there, you know, the thing that, that, that adds to the, the, the challenge when it comes to having to even consider, um, moving people, is that the people that are affected are people that had nothing to do with the problem. And that's, that's, that's the tough thing, whether it's the adults or the children who end up being impacted. Um, but that's why I'm feeling a little better at this point about being able to share with you option B. Um, that has a lot, a lot, lot less of the personnel impact. Um, and so, so what you'll see in this one is where, um, we have, a, where the other, um, non-human capital, uh, cuts were, were suggested, they were mostly with the schools. And so, um, in a quick glance, on the other side, you'll see a schools, as well as school board office, offices. Um, but this comes from a lot of, uh, uncomfortable conversations, even with, um, folks at the cent- at the, uh, school board office as well. But recognizing that this is where we are, and there are some things that we just have to do differently now, uh, but, but also understanding that i- it's, it's a true sacrifice, but hopefully, um, we, we, we are in a, a better position where, um, the needs that we are about to cut can be restored at some point. But, but let me just go through, so this one. So, so the front side of option B, this is a mi- minimum, uh, minimal personnel impact here. Um, there is the, the, the layoff of the IP facilitator, but again, that position, um, and this is really just trying to make these numbers work so that we get to, uh, a place where we're taking off a nice big chunk of this, um, and not decimating the school division when it comes to just, you know, being able to, to take care of our kids. Um, but the IP facilitator role, uh, again, moving into the, the, the AP role, that one is more or less of a wash. Um, there are the couple that are still here from before, the reduction of the literacy, the, the, uh, I'm sorry, salary from the literacy curriculum specialist. There, the layoff of the virtual lab coordinator, um, that position that I talked about having to have someone in that room. Um, we have thought about ways of making that work, um, without this person, if we have to. Um, it won't be ideal, but, but there are things we can do there. That's, um, a, a, a good number that, that helps. And then the position that, last position we kept on this list is the, um, assistant superintendent role, um, being removed, but contracted out, um, as we need those services. Again, that's a major, um, cost savings for us that, that our assistant superintendent is, is willing to, to, to make for now. Um, the, uh, the list there, um, a- again, i- it is, y- you can see all of the amounts going down the list, um, TES, JCIS, EHS, um, lots of conversation with those leaders, um, to, to, to get them to really kind of understand that, uh, this, these cuts are, are, you know, the places that we would need to, that we will go if we, only if we need to. But continuing down on the flip side of that, you'll see some other places, again, that you didn't see on the, on option A, that adds more, uh, money that we could possibly save, uh, that are non-human, uh, capital areas. And so, the, the, the subtotal there, um, lands about six-twenty-seven, one-thirty-nine, um, added to the about a hundred-twenty-five, six-oh-one from the human, um, reductions that we were looking at on this option. And it puts us at a total of, uh, being able to, without, again, without the miscellaneous revenue at two-thirty, basically, uh, without thinking about, uh, what ADM may bring us, being up a little bit, we're at, right at seven-fifty-two, seven-five-two, seven-four-zero, uh, seven-hundred fifty-two thousand, seven-hundred forty dollars. Um, a few notes there that, um, again, very similar to what we talked about in the last option, the hiring freeze remaining in effect, um, positions lost to attrition during the year, be carefully considered before replacing. End-of-year surplus is surrendered. Transportation, this is one I didn't talk about, transportation efficiencies. So, the possi- possibility of us finding some, um, efficiencies in the area of transportation, we do expect, as we get the, the bus right routing system, um, connected, you know, um, a- and I've seen it, you know, our buses aren't, aren't completely full, um, and that's to no one's fault at all. But I think the bus routing system, when it's all said and done, it may help us with being able to be a bit more efficient with perhaps less buses on the road, or perhaps less fuel being, um, utilized of both. So, so we anticipate that, that that's going to pay dividends at some, some point there. And then, uh, the, the last of my notes, um, is certainly the, the payment plan option moving forward is certainly welcomed and, and appreciated, um, the consideration there. Uh, this plan does give our, our students and staff a, a fighting chance to still be successful and productive, um, th- this year, while, while the leaders, we all make good faith efforts to, again, pay back what we owe and ensure we, we don't land in the same spot moving forward. Uh, we are prepared to significantly sacrifice the current budget to resolve past problems. And so, as I alluded to a moment ago, we, we, we hope that there will be consideration in the future as we budget for the next, next year, um, that the areas that we are going to, to, to cut from, that they can be restored because, again, the tightening of the belt, you know, what, in some instances, what that, what that may look like is, um, the, the, for example, one example, because there, I don't even know how many rows here, so I, I won't go through all of them, but just one. So, the custodial supplies. And so, so there are, there's a shave down in that particular line, but what that will mean, and this is what we, what we've talked about with the different leaders, what it will mean if we have to cut, um, is that perhaps in our, in, in our schools, they, all of the floors may not get completely stripped and, and buffed and, and waxed and all of that. But, so, so the strip part, so that, that, there's some materials there that cost a lot. So, what it may mean is that the main hallways get the full, full monty, but maybe in the classrooms, they get, um, the mop, they get the, they get the buff, uh, so it'll still shine and it'll still be clean, but it may not be the full monty of what the entire building would, would ordinarily get. You know, that's just an idea, you know, um, as to how some things may need to be, may need to be cut. Um, there's certainly lots of conversations, you can imagine, with, um, Mr. Barnes regarding our technology. And so, so, so we, what we're able to do in, in some respects there is push back the replacement plan, uh, of, of the, of the Chromebooks. And so, so a- as long as it didn't go past, my, my, my concern there was as long as we didn't go past the warranty period, if we could delay that a little bit, and I could move that seventy thousand or whatever that, that money is. Um, so, so those are the conversations that we had. So, so not comfortable conversations, but conversations that were understood, that this is where we are, and we need to show good faith effort, um, of how we can do this without, you know, how we can, you know, co- contribute to, to making this right without the, the impacting our kids in such a way, our, our staff and our kids in such a way that, that, that is truly traumatic. Um, it, it, it's, it's been, it's been, it's been worrisome a little bit, I, I'll say that, um, because, again, um, when you look at laying off people, typically, that, that happens at a time when you're going into a school year. Um, in, in schools, at least that's been my experience. Um, so, so, so to do those things during the year are, are really, really tough, you know, really, really tough. And so, um, but, but we are prepared to, to do what we need to do, um, and, and we appreciate the partnership in being able to communicate whatever we will have to communicate to our, our employees, um, as a joint group. Um, and then, um, again, um, I, I just had that last thought there, um, and for the sake of the, the, the folks in the room, my team has, has been graciously understanding of the need for the forthcoming cuts and, and are very hopeful of having, um, tho- those funds restored as needed. Certainly, we're not going to ask for anything we don't need. Um, and so, this will give us an opportunity also to assess, um, the, the continuing need for certain, certain funds and, um, certain things. But, um, but, but as needed, we, we're going to be responsible moving forward, and so we just appreciate the consideration of, of more, more so our option B, honestly, than, than option A, um, because certainly option A, you heard the, the impact as it relates to staff and students. And so, so with that, um, I, I'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Croxton and, and anyone else on our team.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Dr. Jones. Yeah, obviously, we're, we're beggars, not choosers, and, um, we'd really, we'd really like something that close, more closely resembles option B for a ver- for a variety of reasons, but a- as you articulated, just, it, it's going to be tremendous impact to the, uh, to the instruction, uh, of our students. And this, this tragedy that we've all been through, I think, has presented us with a lot of really big and bold opportunities, and, and we're moving out on those. And I'm speaking specifically of the centralized services. So, I don't think that the public relations, uh, nightmare is going to undermine all of those good efforts, and I would rather avoid that, uh, for all of us, uh, to, to get to a better place. I, I will point out, if you look at the numbers on option B, if, if, if we just strictly took the operational efficiencies, which is the six-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars, plus this, we forfeit this year's, uh, miscellaneous income, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-five-hundred is what it's estimated to be, now you're up to eight-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand that, that we could potentially pay back in this year. And then if you give us three more years, and if that miscellaneous income holds true, we'll be up to one-point-five-million paid back in three years. That, that's the plan I would propose.
First, I appreciate, Dr. Jones, knowing that you kind of walked in on this. And you walked into a bad situation, unfortunately, as do we kind of all, um, because we didn't know what we didn't know. Um, but I, I appreciate you coming to this board a- and the rest of the school board for coming to us, saying, hey, we realize it happened on our watch. This is the way we can make it right, right now, or partial, just about nearly there. But it does have severe impacts, which our board doesn't want, your board doesn't want, the community doesn't want, uh, without a doubt. You know, we don't want anything that's going to impact our students or their ability to get a good education, bottom line. At the same time, we ha- we have a job to do for our taxpayers, to make sure that it's being handled correctly, uh, as it's not been for anything. Uh, I do appreciate, and I do like this option B that you presented, um, you and me personally. It gets us over the four-hundred-thousand dollars that we had in over commitments already, uh, realizing that the potential other one billion is fees and penalties, that, you, that should be, that, that shouldn't fall on the onus of the kids and the students. Um, but we have to start taking chunks of it back. Uh, I have asked Bobby, as recent as tonight, and I asked you the school board to agree to it, that you add a line item in your budget that's going to be for interest, fees, and penalties, um, so that can be tracked, uh, so we know exactly what that number is. I'll ask to go back and do that for last year as well, so that's where we'll capture that one-point-four-million dollars from last year. Um, I, I don't know that you can repay the two-twenty-nine-five this year because I believe that's probably already revenue in the budget. So, you can't give that up. So, you can't add that to it because it's already calculated into your existing revenue. It, it just wouldn't change anything. The six, the six-twenty-seven plus the one-twenty-five gets to seven-fifty-two, but...
Pardon me. So, we have expenditures against that miscellaneous revenue?
Yes, that's, that's part of, that is part of the overall budget that, uh, is funding your operations for this year.
Okay, but, but next year, would we have the ability to?
Yes.
Yes.
Plan to not utilize it?
Correct.
Okay, so it'll take us four years to pay you back?
Right.
Set of three?
Well, and then you have the previous years as well. So, it'll take a little bit longer.
Okay.
But, but my...
Put in a reasonable amount of time.
Right. My, my recommendation, uh, I, I certainly appreciate you going through these and having the tough dis- tough discussions, uh, with some of these other things, like the technology. I think that's a smart move. If you buy yourself a year, things stay under warranty, uh, and then put it back in. Uh, you know, again, I, I think we have to chip off at the penalty, uh, what we can over time. Uh, my recommendation, based on what you presented, and I'll give my board members an opportunity to speak, uh, would be to target this, um, seven-fifty-two, seven-forty as the number. Uh, hopefully, we'll do better than that because our ADM will hold true, and that'll be more money throughout the year to make those numbers even better. Probably have some attrition that will help with that as well. Uh, I would say we'd put a hold on, uh, a- as you had mentioned, uh, any sharing of surplus until such time as the debt's repaid, and then we'd use that miscellaneous revenue until such time that, whatever that remaining balance is.
Yeah.
And then get back to normal.
And I agree, and I failed to mention, it was already stated that we, yeah, we surrender any end-of-year, uh, balances, for sure.
And, and most likely, what we'll have to do this year, i- if this board agrees to it, I'm just one person talking, uh, if we agree to it in that line item that you have, as we incur those penalties and fees, you'll have to come back before this board to get an appropriation for, to your budget for those monies. So, if that happens on a monthly basis, it'll have to come back to us monthly to approve.
And also, for the, for the public, uh, you know, anything that resembles, that is a penalty, you know, we're going to fight and contest it and protest it and try to get those penalties abated. So, there is a, a chance that some, some number of those, some amount of those could, could be got, you know, wiped away, so...
So, that'd be my recommendation. Gentlemen, I'll let you make whatever comments that you have. Gentlemen, I'll let you make whatever comments that you have.
Dr. Jones, I am somewhat confused between option B and option A in relationship to the paraprofessionals. In option B, what impact will the paraprofessionals have on the budget?
Option B, you said?
Option B.
So there's none, so they don't come into play at all in option B.
Okay, now what about the reading specialists? Is that what we're talking about in terms of the literacy and...
So there is a reduction in the salary by about ten thousand dollars suggested in that particular role. The position itself is one that is required by the status of quality, and so the salary isn't necessarily recommended for that role, but it is a role that we had to have. And so looking at it and considering where it is in relation to the other position that we have, like position that we have on the, you know, on our staff, and it being a newer position is one that we did talk about as far as layoff versus, layoff and figure out how to support that work, or maybe a reduction that could possibly help towards our debt. So that's really what that was about.
I'm glad you understand it, although I don't have a clue what you just said.
It's a reduction in the pay.
The first would take a pay cut?
Yeah.
That's all it means.
Okay.
Keeps the position.
Okay, my original question is in relationship to the reading specialist. Okay, does this impact the reading specialist?
So that is one of the reading specialist position. So we have two, so that's one. The literacy curriculum specialist, it is, they are, they are one of the, pretty much the same job. So there is another reading specialist, and then this one is literacy curriculum specialist. It does work across more than one building, but yes, they're pretty much the same role, different levels.
And this has been a problem for us over the years in terms of getting qualified folks to identify the needs in our classroom. And, you know, and I would recommend very strongly, anything that's impacting the classroom, we need to leave it alone. And I hope this board will support that. Anything that impacts the classroom, we need to leave it alone. Because, you know, we have a school that's credited under condition, and we've got a concern as it is now. Do we magnify that concern in terms of our lack of quality education, trying to save a few bucks? You know, we're not making any headway by when we do that. We cannot allow our education to suffer. We cannot allow our education to suffer in terms of meeting requirement of our children. I don't think this board will stand here and allow that. I really don't believe that. And I'm hoping that board, you guys wouldn't either, you know? So whatever it takes to maintain a quality education for our children, we've got to do it, period. I don't know no other way to say that.
Received. Thank you.
So Mr. Supervisor Johnson, and just for the rest of the board, as we hear the rest of your comments, the difference within option B, if we're discussing option B, you know, the full amount was, Chairman Akers said, the seven fifty two, seven forty. The portion of that that would directly affect classrooms is one hundred and twenty five thousand, six hundred dollars. Just so we're all...
Bud, comments?
For now.
Okay. I agree with Rob. I like the plan B or option B much better than option A, because I agree with Mr. Johnson, Supervisor Johnson. I don't want this repayment to affect our students. And I don't want it to affect the employees and the benefits they receive in working for us. If we get it paid back in four years, that's fine. If you don't, then it'll just continue. We don't know if there's going to be more penalties and fees and interest added on to this thing, so we've got to kind of take that into account on the line item that the chairman suggested you put into your budget. Not what you put in there, but you've got to put something there. I don't have any suggestions to improve the plan. I think it's a good plan. And I would choose option A, and if there's any time in the year that outside of what you've got on this paper that comes up, that's not a penalty or an interest, you come to the board and let us know that you need some funds.
And you mean option B, right?
He meant option B.
Yeah. Let's say A.
We knew what you meant, though.
A, B. I didn't learn my alphabet too well. But, no, I just, I'm very serious about that. I mean, what Rob has said and Mr. Johnson also, so I'm okay with option B, and I think this board will help the school board make sure that our kids and our teachers are taken care of, plus the bus drivers and the maintenance people, and, you know, you can get them flow shy on one way or another, I tell you.
Ronnie, are you still online? Do you have any comments, Ronnie?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yep, here you find.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I echo the comments here. I've been a member of the most recent budget subcommittee, and I do appreciate the work that Dr. Jones has put out on this. I saw the first draft during the committee meeting. He had devised it some. It's more straightforward. I also agree with the option B, and for the reasons that's already been stated. This is a movement target still, because we uncover things along the way, but the good part about all of this is that I think the recognition of what's happened and how we're going forward here, and hopefully with, I would love to see the consensus of both boards, because we need to be unified in this, in this approach. And you're right, it's, to have a particular payback period is good, but at the same time, we have the obligation to provide an exceptional credit, I'm sorry, educational experience for our children in the county. So I would like to see, just going forward, I don't have any particular suggestion differently than what's in plan B, is I'd like to see this kind of tracked, and you'd probably be doing this anyway, but provide it to our board, the tracking at our monthly meetings to see how we're keeping up with this, because, you know, we can only put our best foot forward in this, it may be some changes going along, but at the same time, it's a good beginning to kind of recover from where we have been. And I think that's the positive note that comes out of this meeting tonight, is that we're moving forward with a concrete plan, and if it takes three years, four years, five years, whatever it takes, it's without sacrificing the education side of the system. So I will, I'll conclude those remarks, and thank you again. And one shout out to Mr. McGruder. He had texted me these revised plans, so I did have a chance to review those as Dr. Jones was going through them. Thank you.
Supervisor McGruder?
I'm batting cleanup, all right. Thank you, Dr. Jones, and those that were on the financial committee and worked through this. Thank you to the Essex School staff who had input into this. I'm glad that you did that, that's impressive. Bobby, thank you for all your hard work from our side, and the staff of the centralized financial services department, and the work that you're going to continue to do. It's a yeoman's job, folks, what they've been going through and still dealing with, and it's not over yet. I mean, the hard work is continuing, so thank you, Bobby, and your staff for that. With that being said, I just want to make it abundantly clear that this is not the Board of Supervisors' choice. This is the school board's choice, what plan that they want and what option, your choice. Whichever choice you pick, I will support. That's my line on this one. And whether you pick A or B, that's your choice, okay? Because I believe one point four million, the county has already covered, okay? And I appreciate you taking the responsibility to cover this. I agree a hundred percent with what Supervisor Gill said about a payment plan. I think that can be worked out, okay? And I appreciate having to come back to the board and we'll talk. Now, we understand your needs, we really do, but a lot of people aren't also looking at a bigger picture that we, the Board of Supervisors, have to do. If the federal government comes through with their cuts that they're talking about at the federal level, the county's going to have to make that up. I brought that up two months ago. If they cut school grant funding, that's more money we, the county taxpayers, have to make up. So sheriff needs more space, library has their needs, the judge is looking at a new court building, okay? We have the joint maintenance building that we already agreed, and that'll be long-run savings and efficiencies, and that's great, but that's an expense we have to bear. I know the elementary school's looking at needing a new chiller. We've got to keep the space that these kids are in comfortable enough that they can learn in. So that's the bigger picture, folks. So yes, this is why the school or the supervisor are asking for this money back, is because we have a bigger picture that we're also looking at. So we are working together, and that's important, okay? It's not going to be easy, there's going to be some bumps along the road, but we're going to get through that. So I just want to make that abundantly clear. It's your choice, and we will support you, whatever choice you decide. If you come up with a plan C, this is the first time I've seen this, and I think most of the board here. So, but we'll continue the conversations, we will get through this. Essex School System will get better through this financial difficulty, so, but there's going to have to be a change of culture, a change of process, okay, at the school, okay, and working with us, and as we combine things to find more efficiencies. We cannot continue to do the same things we've been doing the same way and expect different results. It's not going to happen, folks. Things are changing, so we need to change with it, and change is hard, I get that, okay? But we have to do it, or we're not going to make it. So I'm hoping that the financial services department, with the help of the schools and the county, that new budgeting guidelines, policies, and procedures will be put in place. So this will not happen again, all right? Those policy guidelines and procedures are so important, and they need to be followed, they need to be checked. We have to have checks and balances here, so it doesn't happen again. And I know we'll get there. So these are some of the important issues that I wanted to bring up. I support whatever choice you make. We still don't know the full impact of what this school year is going to be as we dig through it. So, but thank you for your presentation. I think you guys are doing great work. I do think that there will be more operational efficiency to be found as we talk and build our discussions. That'll definitely happen. I'm hoping there are going to be some grant opportunities out there that haven't been explored yet, that will help this situation, make it better. So I'm excited about the challenge. It's going to be a tough one, but I'm excited about it, because I know we can if we do it together. If we don't go back into our silos, if we don't say this is the way we're doing it, and not try to work with each other, if the goal is what's best for the students and what's best for the taxpayers of this county, I think we'll make it, and it will make it a lot easier. So I'm done.
Thank you, John. Just to follow up with what everybody said, the decisions of what options you take, even if it's something outside of this, is...
Exactly.
...one hundred percent a school board decision with leadership, without a doubt. I think coming before us with this, saying, hey, we want to make this right, is certainly appreciated by all of us. I'd prefer to see, you know, no major personnel changes given existing, just my preference. But we know we have to get to a certain point. I think if you come up, and I'm just going to use a round number, seven hundred thousand, if you put these changes in and you guys vote on that at your next board meeting, and do your budget amendment, add the line item in there for the fees, fees and penalties that have been incurred already, come to our board after you make that budget appropriation. I think you would find, based on all the comments, that it'll be accepted. One thing that I'd like for your board to commit to is to continue to look at the operational efficiencies that are being presented to you. I know that your other board members haven't heard a presentation, but you'll be getting it at your work session, at your October meeting, from a group called McClure Group, which does energy efficiencies and savings, and looking at things, LED lighting and other things that can really pay for themselves over time, provide some real revenue, some expense savings. I would encourage you all to seriously listen and take those on, because that could have some tremendous impacts moving forward. I know campus consolidation is something that's on your window, that's not going to do anything for this year or next year, but looking forward, we know that we're, teachers are going to get that one percent step increase, somehow you're going to have to get funds in order to do that, because it keeps decreasing with the state. Just some suggestions. But I think if we have a commitment from your board, I think you'll have a commitment for ours, we don't want to let education fall behind. It's very important to us, it's very important to our community, and we will come up, but like I said, I think this board, if I'm not mistaken, is okay with repayment plan of using your miscellaneous revenue and any other surplus, starting next year moving forward. It's how we'll do that until that debt's repaid. And the only way we'll know what that total amount is, is by tracking it on that line item.
One other thing I would like to add to that is, we're tracking the financial side. We need to track how we're doing in terms of affecting with our children, you know? And if we get to a point where we're seeing where we're failing, we've got to do something different. We can't wait until the ship crashes, you know? So if what we planned to do initially, crunching the numbers, is affecting, impacting the children, we need, you need to come to us and say, look, hey, folks, this is not working. This is the results we're getting from these financial decisions, and we can't wait until it's a catastrophe before we make a decision. So if we look at the financial part and look at the assessment of how our children are doing, and if what we're doing for the children is increasing where we want it to be, then we know that the financial part is not impacting that. But we won't know that until we track it. And I would hate for us to keep an eye on the George Washington and lose sight of our children.
I understand.
Chairman Akers? Chairman Akers, if you don't mind, could I give each of my board members just an opportunity, quick opportunity just to express their appreciation, hopefully with some contrition, and just tell you how much they appreciate what you guys have just shared with us? And then I have one final request when they're done.
I've got one other comment. One of the things that I'd like to see is a monthly ADM report that can be put into our board packet, so we can track that each month. I know you look at those already. If we could get that and a copy of the financial statement, which I know Bobby can give us, that we can review each month at our board meeting, that would be great, including that monthly financial, and then we'll actually see that monthly penalty and fee update. It may mean that you're having to create a budget action form for whatever those penalties and fees are and present to us...
Sure.
...each month. But that's the appropriate way to do it, is those come in, have us appropriate the dollars to cover that line item, and we keep that separate from the kind of operational instructional piece of the budget, and that will be what we track for as we repay, as we go along.
Yeah, we will hyper-focus on that, and those are things that we're already planning on providing for you.
Thank you.
Board members? Yes, yes.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
It turned on, Chuck.
It is lit up, number eleven.
Mike's on. Start down, you're it.
Start down, you're it.
I'll start, I'll start listening. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
It was, Mr. Chairman and Board, I really appreciate the opportunity to present this information to you. My experience in education is, from about every viewpoint, you could have an education, from a teacher to a building administrator to a central office, you know, administrator, managing my own budget, and being on the board and seeing, you know, the true, you know, thousand mile viewpoint of a budget in the school system is mind blowing to the best word, especially with something like this going on. So, you know, as also as a parent, it's scary because I know that if Option A were our choice, I think we would be facing a lot more issues in our school system than I think we could even imagine. I think, you know, ADM would, your numbers would drastically, drastically decrease. And I think it would just be a brutal, brutal, brutal happening for our school system, which I would never want. So, hard decisions and, like Supervisor McClure said, it changes hard, choices are hard. And, you know, our job here is education, but it's also part of your responsibility is worry about the taxpayers and for the education because, like you said, 85% of our budget's people. And it's probably about the same of the county budget, it's probably about that number, 70, 70 or 8% of the county budget is usually the education. And, you know, so, you know, we are a big cost on the county. So, I'm well aware of that, and I know our boards are well aware of that. And I just appreciate your support, and I appreciate what we can do to make sure our schools are where they should be and could also be responsible in the way we are physically spending our money for the schools.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to start out by saying, is this on, can anyone hear me?
Yeah, I hear you, I hear you.
I do appreciate your feedback. As far as options, I really wish we didn't have to deal with an option at all. I'm very sorry to hear that we're even in this predicament that we're in. However, I do appreciate you all supporting Option B because Option A was definitely not something I would love to see us have. This is the first time I've seen this, was tonight, so when I saw Option A, I was praying that we might have something else. So, again, out of the two options, you know, Option B is definitely looks a little bit better. So, with that being said, I truly appreciate you all wanting to assist us with this payment plan. I appreciate the fact that you all are not pointing fingers at anyone because we're just as shocked as this as you all are, at least I know I am. I know that Pam and Scott had been working on the financial committee for about two years, and they have requested information from the board. But I trusted prior administrators that they were doing the right thing and knew what they were doing. Obviously, they didn't have that, pretty much probably causes us to be somewhat the problem that we're in. I do really like the fact that you're asking to add the line add item for the penalties and fees. I think that's a really good line item to add. One thing that I wanted to add was that, if I'm not mistaken, I think about a year or two years ago, it was requested that we, the board, did not present such an itemized monthly report showing everything as far as our expenses. So, I think if we did not cut back on what we were showing as a board, that probably we really wouldn't have been in this predicament because that would have caught some of the mistakes that we did not catch then that we're catching now. So, if we had allowed the reports to present how they were presented before two years ago, we wouldn't have been in this position because we would have been able to track that. We would have been able to track the fact that we weren't paying the Internal Revenue Service, so we weren't paying the VRS. So, I'm going to end with saying, thank you for listening to us. Thank you for allowing us to come up with a solution to help pay back the debt that you all have already agreed to pay for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, kudos to you all for the same thing, for taking us on. We asked if we could join forces with you all in finances because keeping one system works is much easier than having a system doing the system damage. We did ask a lot, we tried asking a lot of questions when we saw things that we weren't so sure about. And there were some that said, a few years ago, said, we need to just let this man do his job that he was brought here to do, that we, we had questions, but we weren't allowed to ask and get the right information. We were only able to see what they gave us, which wasn't what it was all about. So, it wasn't like we weren't trying, so it took a while to get to where we are. I'm sorry it got to this point before it was found out. But just know that it wasn't because we weren't trying. Thank you all for stepping up and taking care of our debt. And we promise to work hard to repay the county and keep things going on a great, loving land.
I will just indicate that Scott did, on numerous occasions, kept asking for different information. And, you know, I just felt like I didn't really have hard evidence that something was not right. So, I appreciate him regular digging. But again, you know, at this point, I feel like we were not working together to support each other. But I do know going forward, at least with this board, and I hope next year and the year after, that we have a board that will work together and support each other because at the end of the day, we're here for the kids.
And I agree also, I'm appalled at what has happened. I cannot believe it, I'm shocked. And thank you all very much for helping us out, and it's just beyond imaginable. You know, you have, it goes through every year, and it's gone and gone and gone, and it's never been caught until this past few months. And this, I don't know how it happened, but I'm glad it's getting fixed and it's over with. Coming over with, I should say.
And I will just say that, you know, our previous auditors failed us, they failed you for not capturing a lot of this, a lot of this information you wouldn't have seen. Because these are things that no report would have told you. No report would have told you whether the tax payments that were withheld got sent to the IRS or not, whether the payments actually got sent or not. There was no report that you would have got that would have had that indication on there. And again, the information that you had was based on what you were given. Ultimately, you as a school board are accountable for it. It's just unfortunate that better information wasn't provided, better oversight from your previous administration wasn't given. And it wasn't, and I stated this at our meeting, I'm thankful for Bobby and her team at our centralized services because had it not been for them, we could be in a much far worse situation than we're currently in. So, I'm glad that the school board took the steps that it did to make the changes that it needed to make. I'm hopeful that there's going to be a continued commitment to our working together and our partnerships because it will ultimately save us money. There will be some additional things that are coming out as a result of our audit. I know there was already some preliminary findings, and one's going to be consolidation of systems. And I would highly recommend that the school board agree to that. We're going to look at the best system for the county and the schools and have us potentially migrate to one system. There's going to be cost savings there to go to one system, more transparency, you know, better duty separation. So, there's going to be some of those things that are coming out. And migrations and software is never a fun thing, but, you know, quite frankly, those are the things that we have to look at as a small rural area. So, I thank you guys for all your comments. We appreciate all that you guys do. This isn't a finger point thing, this is how do we come together and fix it? And I think that's what we're doing.
One final request, Chair?
Yes, sir.
So, when I used to be in charge of an organization and I would give some direction, I would ask for a readback. So, I'm going to give you a readback to what I heard that we've signed up to. We're going to give you a line item in our budget and a budget action request. And that line item's going to be to track interest fees and penalties. And then we're going to give you a monthly ADM report so that we can track because that's our leading indicator for how our budget revenue is going to track through the rest of the year. So, those are our do-outs to you, and is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, and then just a shout out to Ms. Tazanari. Thank you so much for hanging with us and for, you're not a voice crying in the wilderness, I promise. Even though we were slow to, slow to listen, but we did listen, and I appreciate it. Your work is, did not go unnoticed, and it is very much appreciated. And then lastly, Ken, on a related but separate topic, we need your help on a major issue. I understand you guys normally have a town hall each year. Could we request that we do one in the near term, in the next maybe couple of weeks? I know you like to do it on a broad range of topics, all the hot topics that you're working with that you need community support and input on. And then we need the issue that we're confronting, that we need community support on, and we want to hear from the community, is on the subject of our capital improvement options, campus consolidation. So, we need to give the opportunity for the community to make input. And we need, some of the questions that we frequently get, we cannot answer. So, I'd appreciate doing it jointly. So, what I'm proposing is a joint town hall in the next two weeks to cover all of your issues so that it's most productive for you guys, but also for us, that one issue.
Well, certainly, we do do a town hall meeting once a year about this time of year. And what we would typically do is we'd go over certain things like the comprehensive plan and educate, or educate, inform the public on how they can participate in the comprehensive plan, which the planning commissions are doing this now. Lou Spencer sits on the planning commission, so they're in the meat of that work right now. We would go over any future updates or projects that we're working on, give updates for, for example, the vehicle maintenance facility would get an update. And from there, we would open up to the general public to ask any comments or questions of the board, and then respond. What I would suggest for a school board, if you're having a town hall meeting, would be to start with the academic achievement and provide some oversight to the public so they're aware of it. You know, start off with a presentation on the academic achievement, where you've come over the last, you know, three years, where you're projecting going forward. If you have the capital improvement information, that you can have some, present that to the public, that's also good. Because we have some things that we don't know what's happening, as John alluded to before. Depending on what comes down from the state, well, really from the federal government, you know, not wanting to potentially eliminate 100% of their, of their funding for social service programs, they could push all that back on the locality. They'll try to push it on the state, but the state's going to push it down on locality. And so, there's some real issues that are coming up that the taxpayers need to be aware of and things that could impact our tax rate. Now, for 100%, there's nobody on this board that wants to raise taxes, and don't even talk about it. But we all have to work together to ensure that we can do the smart things so we can avoid having any taxes raised. So, I'm not opposed to a town hall meeting, we're due for one anyway. The board can kind of weigh in on their thoughts.
Well, I'd like to piggyback on Scott's recap. I didn't hear you're tracking the students' progress, given us report.
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, I'll talk to you offline to see exactly what you mean by that, and we'll make sure we do that, whatever you're asking, that's easy.
Well, we need to know that the students, that we are responsible for educating, they're not being penalized by this number crunch that we're faced with. You know, this board, I can assure you, wish not a child to be educated less just because we're faced with a dilemma.
Understood, understood. We won't let that happen. These are purely just cuts on the periphery. I think what I heard from you, you threw it back to us, you let us, you know, choose which option. We're going to go with Option B, and it's going to be somewhere between the lower and the higher number of, 700,000 is the number that we're going to target. But I think we'll find a solution that doesn't involve any personnel, so no direct impact to students.
Well, I'm just saying, I didn't hear that in terms of your recap.
Sorry about that.
And I think that's more important than the financial part of the recap.
I agree, I agree. Yeah, it was implied, but I should have stated it explicitly. We're on the same page. Thank you.
Town hall's fine with me. I don't know if we can get it done in two weeks because we probably have to advertise it. So, I wonder if we can get it done legally, I'm okay with it.
Is?
The preliminary, I was looking at the week of October 20th, but we'll work offline to see what we can do to your current files.
Okay.
That's the date you're going to look at, that week.
Is? Just being selfish here, the 6th through the 9th, I'm off for sure. The rest of my, the rest of the weeks of the month, I'm gone, except for the 13th, which is our scheduled regular meeting, I'm definitely gone, out of the country, so.
I can talk more offline.
Okay.
See, there's ten votes, and a lot that has to go into putting one together, so.
Okay.
Just again, I mentioned them, new budgetary guidelines, policies and procedures. So, I don't know if that comes from our Central Financial Services Department, but put it on your list that your board will discuss these and approve, as we will discuss and approve on ours since we are combining so many things. And that may not happen for several months, and that's fine, you know? When the right time for that to happen, just you all do it, we'll be doing it, and everybody will be on the same page for that. I mentioned about changing the culture and the process. So, I don't know what to say more than that, but just add that to your, you know, that that needs to be an open discussion. And what that means, like I said, change is tough, I get it, but we're all going to have to. We don't have a choice. So, in light of the situation, in the light of the way the world is working today, we just, we have to change, and we've got to change our culture to meet those changes. It's just flat out simple, so. Add that to the list.
Absolutely, and I'm sorry I didn't mention that specifically. That's one Ms. Tazanari and I have already discussed, and our board will be discussing it. But the beauty of what we've embarked on is it's not us and you, you know, it's centralized services. So, what we're going to...
The culture of we.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what we need to get to.
It's we. And the beauty of it, I think, just out of necessity, so the people that are working on the centralized services team don't pull their hair out. Every policy that we have and you have from the past, we need to merge them and find the synergies. And there's going to be, you know, the eaches requirements that we'll have to hold on to, or you may have to hold on to, but as best as possible, we're going to merge them all. Anything that's in that realm, you know, finance or financial management, human resources, we'll merge them all. And I think that will shine a light on where there are disparities. And then we'll have to ask the obvious questions, why are there disparities? So.
I'd ask for everybody to be respectful for the people that are up here speaking. Even if you don't disagree with something, we do try to run a very respectful meeting. So, I appreciate the uh-uh's and the uh-huh's or any of that kind of stuff, please keep that to a minimum.
And Dr. Jones, I've been pushing for 10 years efficiency, operational efficiencies, and I love when my department heads tell me they have saved $200. I love it, absolutely love it. So, I'm hoping that reports that you give to your board, I don't need these reports to your board, tell them where the operational efficiencies are being found. I mean, those are things that we celebrate because your team has done that, and we need to celebrate those things, as our department, people do the same, and I celebrate those. I get ribbed about it, and I'm fine with that. But I'm going to celebrate every one of those operational efficiencies because it just shows the hard work of our county employees. And I know the hard work of your employees need that shout out as well.
And I would like to say one more thing. I would like to say, thank you, Dr. Jones, for stepping into this board and he has done it with great stride. He is a smile on his face through most of this, and I think he's very, he's been very good for us.
Yeah, he had hair before he got here. Little bit, little bit. Thank you, Ms. Tazanari. And so, I will just say thank you to all of you guys. We truly appreciate you hearing me tonight, hearing us tonight, and understanding that we are committed to doing our part to make this right and to create a brighter future moving forward. So, these are areas that we don't need to be concerned about in the coming future. So, thank you for your time tonight, and I'm not going to hold you any longer. Thank you. Ronnie, are you okay with the town hall meeting?
Yes, I'm okay with the town hall meeting, and I just want to say, as far as the feedback from tonight, it was all good, I do appreciate that. I do appreciate that. I think it's a good idea. I'm not, I don't think we should have meetings for the sake of having meetings, but having a joint school board, board supervisors meeting from time to time, whether that's quarterly or semiannually, just to kinda have a recap of these things at the meeting, might be a good idea as well. So, I'll just throw that out there. I'm done.
Good point. Thank you, Ronnie. So, our act, I'm gonna come back, we'll look at, try to coordinate with everybody for a good date for a town hall meeting, kinda lay out a format for that. Like I mentioned to you, that's kinda how we run ours. We do overviews of things that we have as a county have going on to keep the public informed. I can tell you that when we had our kinda reassessment town hall meeting, that was, nobody wants taxes raised. I can tell you right now, I don't care what, that's something that we've gotta stay away from because there were people I'd never even seen before that came out that were raising a fist at us. But again, I would highlight the academic achievements that you guys have had because I don't know that that's said enough and it probably needs to get out there. So, I appreciate your time. At this point, if our board doesn't have anything, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, we're adjourned.
At this time, can I get a motion to adjourn for the school board? And can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Alright, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.